All right. It's about three late in this conference session, council. We have many items. Eleven items this evening. Legislation.
Whoa. Maybe we should, maybe we should read these four.
Title, not title on it?
Yeah.
Do you want to read?
No.
No, the chairman does.
Chairman does.
Can we, can we, so has a sign in this, can we just, we'll just keep rotating through? Is that okay? We'll start with you and then we'll sort of rotate through on the A, B, C, D.
Okay.
Got it. Any other recommended changes or additions to the agenda presented this evening? Yeah, like the three this December 20th, 2017 council meeting to order to stay for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agish?
Yes.
Mr. Kossar?
Yes.
Mr. LaCicero?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
All of you have received a set of minutes from our last regular schedules evening on December 6th, are there any revisions to those minutes?
I know.
And if not, then they stand in a proven on record. Under reading and communications, Mr. Tisch.
I have an apology.
Mr. Morbe?
Ah, yes. So, Joe, what are lights? We didn't get funding for our lights on phase three.
I received a Dear Joe letter.
Okay.
Yeah, actually, we didn't make the cut. We fell about three points short of making the cutoff for fine funding. I did set up a meeting on January 4th with the gentleman from East Gate that handles the program with MS as well and to see where we fell short and if there's any wiggle room that we can get on the bubble or at least get any type of movement because they'll take formal action on it at their January general policy board. So, I'm disappointed that we didn't get funded.
The, the house across the street from me, Raylingers, remember me discussing that? Okay. So Liz is going to be out of town for a couple of weeks. She's, her daughter passed away, so I talked to her. And so she'll be home in three weeks and we'll revisit that, try to get her some resolve with them. Any updates on properties? Kirk, Hickory Hollow?
I can give you an update on Hickory Hollow. We had a hearing this week and the court allowed the motion for summary judgment to be filed and will be ruled upon probably within the next month or so. The court also set a trial date of June 5th, I believe, 5th or 6th, I believe. And the court said this case will be wrapped up one way or the other before the two-year deadline, which is October, but they set the trial date in June. I'm hopeful that if we get the summary judgment motion granted, that'll be the end of this case and that could be well before June.
Wow. Wow. That's much easier. Anything on Kirk? Did we make any progress?
There's not been any activity that I'm aware of.
No, there was a truck there the other day working, but the only thing we could possibly do to him is like a proper maintenance on the garage for not being painted and the front porch, by the way, he's a recliner sitting. Everything else is on the interior.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, we definitely need some kind of timelines on these, these issues, you know what I mean? Even like this here. Now, that house has been sitting vacant for how long? And, you know, nothing's getting done with it. You know, that's, we talked, we kicked this thing and beat it up, but it's just, it's just, you know, the horn and on our side here. What about the tarp on Hilltop? Anything?
He was given 60 days, it's like the middle of January, I guess, until, I think like the 15th or 16th, something like that.
He was represented by council when he came to court the last time and his council confirmed for us that it'll be done and we granted him 60 days in mayor's court, which, again, that's a situation where I don't see any other way than to allow the person enough time to establish the means to get it done.
Okay. Okay. I got a, just as I was leaving the office this afternoon, I got this email and it has something to do with the Canfield City Income Tax Review Board. Joe, I'm just going to give this to you and if you can give me a response back tomorrow so that I can respond back to this, this email.
Can I see that?
It's like a three minute reading.
Like a three minute letter, yeah.
Somebody requesting a hearing or?
Uh, information about the tax review board, people on it, off of it, whether they elected minutes, everything else, so. Mr. LaCicero is not here this evening, but Joe was the drive behind this strategic plan. Joe's the person that went out and had this survey done and Joe's the one that really drove this thing to fruition and got it accomplished. And I wanted to give him kudos for that. This is a, a best practices that came over through a Walsh University website. It talks about the importance of a strategic plan and strategic management. And, and it starts with a clear mission, identity of a vision, a vision grounded in cost benefit, blah, 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 just exactly what we had worked on here. And again, I just want to thank Joe personally for staying with that, helping us develop this, and I hope that the new administration going forward, that we, that we keep on identifying issues with our strategic plan and keep on course. And we really need to be looking at a five to 10-year plan for, for everything, for maintenance, for roads, for buildings, for future needs and all that. So, and I'm going to ask Joe even if he would even sit in with us on some of these strategic planning meetings because he was very instrumental in, in the driving force of getting this done, so. Kudos, kudos to Joe. Let me see what else I got here. I think that's it. That's it.
May I, Chris?
You know, there's not much left to say after John gets done. He'll raise some stuff up. That strategic plan is the roadmap to the future. For those of you coming into council, that's going to be your guide. That's, to the best of our knowledge, where we want this city to go, we modify it constantly, but it's the roadmap to our future. Just a comment in passing, the JED that exists out on 62 and 446, we are trying to organize the JED committee and the city has appointed me the representative, the city representative, and nobody else has really acted on that. So Joe Orino and I are pushing to get the township to pick their representative on that committee and for the owners and the employees to get their person. So it's something that must be done in order for us to function effectively out there. Nobody seems to be wanting to move. Joe and I are going to give it our best shot before this year ends. Right, Joe?
Yeah.
We have to threaten them with physical violence. That's all I have.
Joe? Yeah, under correspondence, I have a couple of items. We did get a letter from the Ohio EPA confirming the phone conversation. I'll just read the middle paragraph, which is the most pleasing news is that the Ohio EPA has reviewed the documentation that you provided and determined that the city of Canfield public water system is now resolved all violations discovered during the November 30th sanitary survey, which they include water with the sanitary. So we did get a clearance on the backflow program and it's in print, so we're happy to see that. I did receive a letter from Dominion. I believe we have a few Dominion customers on the north end of town that are going to the PUCO for an increase on their transportation lines and what they're looking at is a, about a dollar sixty-eight per month increase for the cost of transportation of the gas in the line. So anybody that's a Dominion customer would be affected by that and the majority of our customers are with Columbia gas. And then I mentioned the letter I'd received from East Gate denying, or telling us that we did not make the funding cut and we're going to do a little bit more reconnaissance on that first of the year. That's all I have under communication.
Great, Joe. Thanks. Okay. Under reports of committee city manager department heads, Mr. Morgan?
This was a, an email that was sent to the chief. It was from Patty Jack Law. And it goes, "The Canfield Fire Department went above and beyond yesterday. My 91-year-old mother fell and hit her head yesterday upon returning from almost two months in a hospital and rehab. My sister called the ambulance and they quickly transported her back to the hospital for evaluation, but the fire chief told my sister to call them upon her return and they would be happy to help her get home into the house. Eight hours later, last night after evaluation and findings of no serious injury except for a bruised face, the fire department met them at the house and helped her upstairs into the house. Thank you all so very much. It puts my mind at ease to know that such a caring service is nearby for my family in the home where we grew up." And this is just one of many letters that we get at the fire district. And I know I say this and I probably say maybe too often, but we have the best of the best, man. I mean, we are so proud of our fire district and you should do, you should be as proud. And this is just one of many letters that we get thanking our guys for the service that they do. They don't have to do that. They go, always go above and beyond. And so kudos to our firefighters and our chief, deputy chief, and all the ball.
Thanks, John. Mayor?
In the chief's absence, I'd like to share with you what we did on Monday evening. Gave an award to one of our policemen. He did something quite remarkable. The award he got was Meritorious Service. There was a, there was a vehicle going north of Columbiana on Route 11 on the wrong side of the road. Highway patrol was not available, so they called our people 2:00 in the morning. And Aaron Young, one of our policemen, responded to that and he took steps that got a DUI female off the road and he put himself in harm's way and did an excellent job, excellent job. Who could have killed, that person could have killed somebody going the wrong way on Route 11 and wasn't even aware that she was going the wrong way. It was a beautiful ceremony, I got to say a few words and I presented the plaque to him, but it was, it was so nice. You're going to see pictures of it, not in the prior this Thursday, but week Thursday. And we brought in our best guy to do that right up, JT Whitehouse.
He's also on Facebook page here, I'm at, yeah, police Facebook page. Joe?
Okay. All right. We have 11 items of legislation to be addressed this evening. The first order of business is the ordinance, amending ordinance 2017-35, the annual appropriation ordinance to make appropriations for current expenditures, expenses and other expenditures of the city of Canfield, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017. And again, basically, this is annual legislation that's done at the end of the year to close out a lot of the unfinished business that cropped up during the last few months of the year that weren't included in the budget. Some items include the expenses for the new city manager. We had additional expenses for legal services through this annexation process on the west end of town. We had replacement of two damaged decorative poles in the city this year, which we haven't yet received reimbursement yet from those, one of them actually, I believe one of them we had claimed.
I've gotten the money from both of them.
Oh, you did get both of them?
They were insurance claims from the, the actual vehicle driver that hit the pole. We got money from their insurance company for both of them.
Okay, I thought one of them, okay, very good. And utility clerk severance, who will be leaving at the end of the year, heaters at the Public Works, which we talked about a couple of weeks ago, and contractual services with sanitary sewer treatment. That's the payments we make to the county. We under budgeted that for this year. And also the sanitary pump at Giant Eagle, which by the way, was delivered today and installed, so we're back in full service there, which I'm glad of that. We now have a backup. Everything's been refurbished and renewed and we're going to keep a little closer eye on that for the future. Second order of business is an ordinance approving the replat of Canfield city lots 42, 43 and 44 at Hillside Drive by Corey McLean. And this is the property that runs just west of Hillside Drive on the south side of 224. It was a property previously owned by the Plaza owner, just like kind of a narrow 50-footer, I don't think it was even 50-foot, like strip. And the property owner on the corner wished to purchase that so he could move his house back and actually enter the house from Hillside Drive is kind of the future plans. But everything checked out on the replat. There was a, an easement that was brought to our attention and we had that noted on the plat that it also referenced the easement that was located. Item C is an ordinance authorizing, and item C, D and E actually deal with the annual resurfacing program. Item C is change order number one for RT Vernal paving and excavating for the 2017 paving program. Set action authorizes the additional paving of Barnstone Drive. And this was the city share of that particular project off of 224. Item D is change order number two for the paving program. And this, this is a, the actual quantity adjustments of the actual quantities versus the bid quantities. And that shows up as a net decrease of $16,747.34. And then item E is change order number three. This was for additional paving that was done up at the Public Works building by the gas pumps for the rebuilding of a catch basin on Finley that they couldn't rehab and connections of the roof leaders into that basin on the Finley project. And that was an increase of $8,860. Item F on the agenda is an ordinance amending section 947 of the Canfield Codified Ordinances of Municipal Cemeteries. And again, we talked about this a month or so back, where we're increasing the rate structure for the cemetery, adding some additional costs for overtime hours or off-hours and some language changes in the rules and regulations, which is the follow-up to that. It's item G, actually pertains to the same issue, the amending of the rules and regulations for the cemeteries. And these recommendations have gone through the Park Rec and Cemetery Committee and are recommended by them for passage. Okay, and item H, we have an ordinance providing transfers to unclaimed monies fund and we needed to transfer an additional $228.06 from the general fund to the unclaimed monies fund and $100 from the security deposit fund to the unclaimed monies fund. Item I is a temporary appropriation ordinance and this is again, kind of the blueprint for next year, for 2018. And it just covers all of the operational expenses. There's no capital included in this appropriation. It just gets the daily, day-to-day operation up and running and we'll be dealing with the budget requests from the various departments in the next couple of months. And by March, we will have a, a full budget in place or, before you for approval, so just kind of a, this, this one just gets us, keeps us operating until the full budget's in place. And we're looking at a total general fund budget at this point of $3,957,700. And again, that includes no capital projects at this point. And the total budget, including enterprise funds, which is your water, wastewater, storm shore, is at $8,744,952.42. Item J is a resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of Canfield to submit a grant application and to execute all agreements relative to the East Gate Regional Council of Governments for funding through the moving of the Community Forward Planning Grant for the US 224 Access Management Plan, Phase One, and declaring an emergency. Again, declaring an emergency as there's an application deadline of getting this in by the end of the week. And this is the project I talked about last week, that we're looking at studying the corridor up around 2000, 224 and State Route 11 and looking at ways of possibly introducing some access roads or something to get the traffic off of the main road that are going into the businesses and the restaurants and allow for a smoother transition in and out of the city. Something that we've been trying to deal with and find funding to study for quite some time and this opportunity arose, so we hope we're successful in seeing this through. Item K is a motion advancing funds from the general fund to the OVI Task Force Grant Fund for fiscal year 2018. And again, this is just startup money to get the program moving and then it'll be reimbursed and put back into the general fund. And that's all I had on the agenda. As the mayor had mentioned, we have received the JED agreement and the annexation agreements. I've provided copies to the new members of council and the mayor. It's something to take a look at and start getting familiar with. I think there are still some issues that need to be resolved in both of those agreements. The plan was to have a motion on the floor this evening and set a public hearing, but I don't think we're ready for that at this point. We're going to try and schedule another meeting with the township as early as this week or next week if we can, see if we can resolve some of those other issues before we go ahead and pass a motion and set the public hearing. So that's kind of where we're at, I believe, at that point. The sanitary sewer pump, as I mentioned, is functioning at Giant Eagle. That's done. Streetlight project, we did mention. The mayor brought up the point about the, the existing JED that's out on the sixth, 446, the Windsor House. We've had delay after delay in getting the board set up for that JED. And up until that board is set up, we cannot collect our income tax. The Windsor House had sent us a check just recently for the income tax, but we have no mechanism or way of collecting that. Actually, it's, the board needs to set up a, a bank account once established. The check goes into that account and then it's distributed to the city as the way the law allows. So it's incumbent upon us to get that board up and functioning so that they can take an action to get that account in order and we can start receiving our money. So I know the mayor and I have made a concerted effort to see that through and try and get that done before the end of the year. For my own, I guess, gratification, this is my last meeting as city manager and I want to begin by stating that it's been an honor and a pleasure serving this city in that capacity. And I wish all the best for the new members of council coming on and those members that I've served with for the last four years in the previous administration. But through that time, we looked at a, just as I prepared each year, a end-of-year summary, going back from 2010 and looking at the work that this board has accomplished as well as the other boards over the eight years. We've administered 27 grants through the city of Canfield. We have three zero-interest loans that we administered. These are all for infrastructure projects, road projects, water and sewer projects, and did 22 locally funded projects throughout the city. And when you look at that, the legislation that has to take place and the cooperation between council and administrations, that's about three or four pieces of legislation per grant or activity that took place. So that's where a lot of this business that happens here at these meetings, you know, doing the resolution, you do a resolution before you apply, you have to do a resolution or an ordinance if the project becomes funded. There's a lot of follow-up and a lot of work and cooperation that goes on between the city manager and council. It's, it's been an excellent, I believe, relationship that we've had over the course of the eight years and I applaud you for that and wish the new manager the very best as well as the new council coming on. And as I've mentioned before, I plan on staying through January, but I will certainly make myself available if needed beyond that point if there's something that comes up and I can help out. Very happy again to have served in this capacity. Love the city of Canfield, it's a great community and continue to work for it. With that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Same to you, Joe. Joe, it's been an absolute pleasure and an honor to work with you. I don't think we've had, we had, we've had good city managers. In my term here, I've only worked with you and my experience with you has just been phenomenal. And I thank you for the leadership and the time, the commitment that you put into running a city. And I just want to thank you personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
On, on our agenda, we might want to correct B.
I already did.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I sent you an email.
Yeah, okay. Okay. The ordinance was right and it mapped right.
Right. Yeah, I sent you an email with the correction.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
I'd also like to thank Joe. I've had the opportunity to work with Joe, both when I was a manager here and when I was a manager in Sebring, as a city engineer or county engineer and as city manager here. And I think that Joe has done an exemplary job in all of those areas and been extremely helpful to those of us in local government within Mahoning County. I'm sure there are other officials who would say the exact same thing, so.
Thank you. Other advice to Joe? It's been a wonderful, many years to work with such a knowledgeable person, kind of giving me the information that I've needed in the, you know, the past years to kind of get this job done and I just really want to say thank you.
Joe, some of us still have your phone number, too.
We know where you live. We're, we're, we know where you live.
Joe, I want to, I want to personally thank you. For those of you that don't know, I came into the office every single morning that I was in town and Joe would put up with me for anywhere from half an hour to an hour. Kept me out of jail a couple of times, told me what I could do, what I couldn't do. And it's, it's just been a great adventure for me. Joe, if I may, I didn't know where I wanted to put this into the program this evening, program, council meeting, have a proclamation. Whereas Joe Orino was born in Youngstown, Ohio, obtained a bachelor's degree in engineering from Youngstown State University. And whereas Joe began his career with the city as a city engineer before serving as city manager in Canfield. And whereas Joe's service from 2009 to 2017 was distinguished by establishing the first JED in Mahoning County and numerous grants that he received to perform projects within the city. And whereas Joe also devotes time to civic duties as an active rotarian, member of the Ohio Professional Engineers Society, is also registered in West Virginia, Pennsylvania and Hawaii. And whereas Joe has achieved all of this success both personally and professionally despite his devotion to his 1969 Plymouth Barracuda, 1932 Dodge Brothers business sedan and his love of the open road. And whereas Joe is a member of the Classic Cruisers, a band formed in 1966, which Joe plays, plays the guitar and performs vocals. And whereas Joe has been happily married over 40 years to his lovely wife Linda, a nurse, and together they have raised three children. They also look forward to spending more time with their eight grandchildren and counting. And whereas Joe's dedication, creative mind, visionary thinking, easygoing manner, likability, and most important, his integrity are his trademarks and are fondly remembered by citizens, officials, employees in the city of Canfield. Now therefore, I, Mayor Bernard J. Cosar, on behalf of the city council, citizens, employees of the city of Canfield, do hereby issue this proclamation to Joseph Orino in recognition of his many achievements and we extend our gratitude and appreciation to Joe for his many years of exemplary service as city manager. We congratulate him for his We congratulate him for a job well done and wish him continued success and happiness as he retires.
Joe, it's going to take a while. Thank you, Mayor.
There you are.
Thank you, guys. Joe, turn your keys in to the end.
I'll send him a letter.
I'll be escorting out tonight.
That's good.
Thank you.
All right, so the month of this summer, we issued three permits for total valuation of $33,600. If you want to take a ride by 123 Port Street, we actually have a house going up over there, the blocks going up to Batfield, and hopefully next week, we'll start on the main floor.
The unclaimed monies fund that I'm making the transfer to, those monies that I'm moving are from checks that have not been cashed. Five of them were income tax refunds, two of them are part refunds. You have five years to claim it from unclaimed funds, and if it doesn't get claimed by the end of that period of time, that money actually gets transferred back to the general fund, and we get to keep it. We'll have almost $2,800 in that fund by the end of this year, so it's not very much, but I wish people would just cash their checks.
Christine, does that money go into the publication that the state sends out periodically?
No, but I do intend to get it published on our website with a form for people to claim. I do send out letters prior to moving it. I send out one more letter to the person it was sent to, ask them, did they get the check? Did they lose the check? Do they want it reissued? And if I don't hear anything back from them, then it gets moved.
I'm always amazed at the names that I see in there, and I've made phone calls to a couple of people and said, what's that all about?
Well, I had one last year. I got a letter from them after it was moved to unclaimed funds. Got a letter from them saying, oh, they lost the check, can I reissue it? I reissued the check out of unclaimed funds, and it's not cashed yet.
One other thing I did want to mention, I'm sorry. The January 3rd, we will have a reorganizational meeting and the swearing-in of the new members of council and the mayor. And one thing, if you can get together with yourselves and the administration and think about who you may want to appoint as president of council, because that activity would have to take place as the first order of business on that evening. Actually, Mark opens the meeting and they accept nominations for president of council, and then from that point, he takes over for the rest of the meeting. We also have appointments that have to be made from council members on the various committees. The Planning and Zoning Commission requires a member of council. The Design Review Committee, a member of council. We currently have a vacancy. If you have anybody that's interested in serving on the income tax review board, we need to get a name for that board. Cardinal Joint Fire District, I know John has served over, how many years now? It's been, done a great job, and I believe you've made a reference that you'd like to stay on that committee. You'd have to be renominated to that committee. And the jet board, again, you know, the language in the jet agreement is that it's a member of council or appointment, so I believe the mayor has made reference that he'd be willing to serve or not serve. It's your pleasure, whichever. You decide. Again, we need somebody on that board to get things moving over there, and I know the mayor's done a great job with getting that established. So just, again, if we can get the, we have it on our webpage, I believe, and we faced that the meeting, it'll be on the 3rd at 5:00 for the swearing-in, and then the actual meeting will start at 5:30 as the rest. So I just want to bring that up as well. And you have no reports.
I don't really have a report. I mean, frankly, we've been cranking it out on the annexation agreement and the jet and the Caitlin matter.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Under persons designing additional information from department heads, if you step forward to the podium, state and any person, the record should be questioned, assuming the assignment of the person, no more than thirty minutes total. Questions solely pertaining to the department heads' report this evening. Under recognition of persons designing speed before council matters, step forward to the podium, state managers, clearly for the record, keep your comments brief. There was no one, so I'll leave a little. Old business, there's none. Under new business. Ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of four readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second. Second, Mr. Morve. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of two readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tish. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes. Mr. President, I have an ordinance amending the ordinance 2017-35, the annual appropriation ordinance, to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the city of Canfield, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 1st, 2017. I move for passage.
Second, Mr. Morve. Discussion?
Thank you. Joe went over the items as far as the amendment overall. I think that the adjustments total $123,856.12, which brings our total appropriation for 2017 to $11,081,816.61.
Thank you. Public comments? Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
This is 2017-39.
Item D, ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of four readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second. Second, Mr. Morve. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of two readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mayor. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance approving the replat of Canfield City lots, number 42, number 43, 44, at Hillside Drive by Corey McLean, and we move for passage.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tish. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Item C, ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of four readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mayor. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of two readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second. Second, Mr. Tish. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing change order number one for RT Vernal Paving and Escavating Incorporated, parentheses, 2017 paving project, and parentheses, move for passage.
Second. Second, Mr. Tish.
So, yeah. When this issue came up about bornstone, and I thought we should have done more, I know we had some responsibility there, but I thought we should do more, hold the developer responsible for paving, helped pave that road. And so this ordinance, I'll be voting no. And that's almost.
Public comments?
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
No.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
This is 2017-41.
Thank you. Item D, ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of four readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Morve. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance authorizing change order number two for RT Vernal Paving and Escavating Incorporated, 2017 paving project, parentheses, and we move for passage.
Second. Second, Mr. Morve. Discussion?
This is a change order that is really a negative number, $16,747.34, which are always good ways to.
That's like.
That's where I'm voting for.
They covered the other one before you.
Public comments? Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
This is 2017-42.
Thank you. Item E, ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of four readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Morve. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of two readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tish. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance authorizing change order number three for RT Vernal Paving and Escavating Inc., parentheses, 2017 paving project, parentheses, and we move for passage.
Second.
Second, Mayor. Discussion? Public comments? Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
This is 2017-43.
Thank you. Item F, ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of four readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Morve. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of two readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tish. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance amending section 947 of the Canfield Codified Ordinances Municipal Cemeteries. I move for passage.
Second. Second, Mr. Morve. Discussion?
This ordinance and the one following it has been talked about for maybe a little over a year at the Parks Recreation Cemetery Board. Actually, I think the discussion started before Todd, our public works foreman, got injured, and then was carried over to this year, and now we are finally culminating the modification in rates and rules and regulations within the cemetery.
Thank you, Mr. Tish. Public comments? Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
This is 2017-44.
Thank you. Item G. Ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of four readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Charlie. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of two readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mayor. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes. Mr. President, I have an ordinance amending rules and regulations for the Canfield Cemeteries. I move for passage.
Second. Second, Mr. Morve. Clerk, please call, discussion? Public comments? Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
This is 2017-45.
Item H, ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of four readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Morve. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City Canfield under the Council Dispensary requirement of two readings of post-ordinance authorized adoption of the same pod's first reading, there was second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Tish. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tish?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance providing transfers to the unclaimed monies fund, and we move for passage.
Second.
Second, Mayor. Discussion? Public comments? Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
This is 2017-46.
Thank you. Item I, ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City of Canfield, under the council dispensary requirement of four readings of post-ordinance and authorized by title only, go second.
Second.
Second, mayor. Clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Cosar?
Yes.
Mr. Morve?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Ask for the provisions, section 4.05 of the Charter of City of Canfield, under the